Roll call, please.
Charles Cooper.
Here.
Becky Duncan.
Here.
Ginny Ledbetter.
Here.
Vanessa Matthews.
Here.
Elizabeth Pendergrass.
Here.
All right, approval of the minutes, the record meeting in April 2019.
Record meeting for April 8, 2019, be it remembered that the Board of Mayor and Malden and Metten, regular monthly session Monday, April 8, 2019, at 6:00 PM at City Hall in Jamestown when the following proceedings were had and entered a record to lit. Present and presiding, the Honorable Linda Maynes, Mayor, Gail Dishman, Recorder, and on a roll call by City Recorder, the following members of the Board were present, Charles Cooper, Becky Duncan, Ginny Ledbetter, and Vanessa Matthews; absent, Elizabeth Pendergrass. Mayor Maynes called the meeting to order and welcomed everyone for attending. The minutes from the previous meeting were read, and on a motion by Charles Cooper, seconded by Becky Duncan, the Board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved the minutes for March 2019. The minutes from the special call meeting were read, and on a motion by Charles Cooper and seconded by Becky Duncan, the Board on a roll call vote, all four, and none against, approved the minutes for the special call meeting held March 25 of 2019. Mayor Maynes asked if there was any citizens that would like to address the Board with any matters or concerns, and there was none. Mayor Maynes gave the mayor's report. He stated that FAA should be releasing soon the names of the airports for the funded projects, hoping to hear something by May. He then stated that the contracts for parking rent grant for the pool and splash pad should be ready to be signed by sometime in late May, that they were one more meeting required before signing, and that the pool would open this year for the season on Memorial Weekend. Tom Bennett with Bennett and Associates gave the engineer report. Gary South, the building inspector, then gave his report. Attorney Al Reed then gave the attorney report. On a motion by Vanessa Matthews, seconded by Charles Cooper, the Board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved the financial statements for March 2019. On a motion by Ginny Ledbetter, seconded by Vanessa Matthews, the Board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved the month of bills for March 2019, in the amount On a motion by Vanessa Matthews, seconded by Charles Cooper, the Board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved the new demolition application for permits. On a motion by Becky Duncan, seconded by Charles Cooper, the Board on a roll call vote, all four, none against, approved the pay for a building inspector and codes enforcement. See contract drafted by City Attorney Bailey Al Reed. With no further business, on a motion by Charles Cooper, seconded by Becky Duncan, the Board voted to adjourn.
All right, I have a motion to approve the minutes.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Ms. Matthews.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Ledbetter. Any discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Charles Cooper.
Four.
Becky Duncan.
Four.
Ginny Ledbetter.
Four.
Vanessa Matthews.
Four.
Elizabeth Pendergrass.
Four.
All four, none against.
All right. Next on the agenda is grievances for the citizens and other business, and we also have the farmer's market here tonight, and they want to get up and speak first.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Do you mind if I scoot over a little bit?
Yeah, right ahead.
I'm representing the farmer's market today. I'm Petria Nash, and our president was not able to be here. He's out with John Gunther collecting beehive for Ventress County, so he asked me to speak today. I brought something that we usually serve at the farmer's market for you all to try. It's not really a bribe if I knew there was going to be some of that. Sorry, I didn't really realize that.
I brought a basket too, Petria.
You did. Thank you, Ginny. We've been, as you probably know, we've had a farmer's market for the last five years that's under the help and direction of the Soil Conservation Department. And we appreciate all the efforts that they've made, and we've had a lot of cooperation, thank you, from that office. But we find that although we've been there for five years, many people still don't know that there's a farmer's market, and there's very limited participation by the citizens. And we would like to be more viable and have a better spot to contact the citizens of Ventress County and supply them with fresh and healthy food. So we have, with Mayor Maynes's permission, we've set up at the city park between the Chamber of Commerce office and Mark Walker's office. And we've had really great visitation there. We feel that we have been an asset for your revitalization of the city because we've drawn people to that area. In your last, in the last meeting by the Chamber of Commerce for the then and now Historical Society, we were able to direct a lot of the people to the different buildings and explain to them what the signs were and how the guided tour or self-guided tour work. So we enjoy being here, and we think that we've really done a great job of bringing some walking public to the square and letting people be more familiar with what we have to offer. We've noticed that our sales have probably doubled by being double for you, at least, yeah, by being in this square. And people...
Mine's more like times four, times five.
Times four or five, okay. Well, Ginny's really got a lot of good products, and I think we all have a lot of good products. So as people know we're here, we're getting more people coming in, we're getting, of course, we're not even into the tomato and corn season, so when that happens, we think we've probably got the market cornered on the home-raised tomatoes. Most of us also grow without pesticides, and most of the people that we are working with are having organic produce. Since we talked to the planning commission, we have gotten our insurance for anybody that comes on the property, so if there are any accidents, the city is not responsible for anything. And I have a copy of our insurance policy, and I'll pass that out. So most of these are copies, but I still, I think I've given you a copy already, but most people have not seen it. So there's the certificate of the insurance, and I'll pass that to you. Also, when somebody comes in, we try to be very friendly and welcoming to everybody. We have a sign up here that says we're a nonprofit, and we are dedicated to providing locally grown food that's fresh. Our lettuce will last in the refrigerator probably two weeks. If you notice, if you get it at a big box store, it's probably gone in three days. And also, as far as health-wise, fruit and vegetables that are picked the same day, sold and eaten are much more nutritious than food that has been brought in from other countries or other faraway locales. We also thank you for shopping and tell you that if nobody is satisfied with the product that they have bought, we're happy to replace it, and we're happy to deal with any complaints. So there is no person going home disgruntled because they've got something they weren't satisfied with. So we really try to do that. This is a binder that the vendors all sign. There's an agreement by every vendor here that they have their own insurance, and if there's any problem arising, that they will not hold the City of Jamestown responsible. So we feel like we've taken all the liability out for you. There's about seven of us that will be participating as the weather gets a little better and more of the products are available. But right now, we're selling baked goods, eggs, jams and jelly, fresh lettuce, fresh greens, kale, different kinds of things that could grow in cooler weather. But a number of us have greenhouses or high tunnels, so we'll be able to have tomatoes probably well into the winter. So we're looking forward to being able to do that. I'll pass this out to you, too, if you'll mind.
Ms. Nash?
Yes, ma'am.
If you would, use the microphone for the television, okay?
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, thank you.
And this is a whole premise. I have a list of all the people that we collect $1 dues from. That happens if they come in and they sell more than $10 of produce or items, then we ask them to pay a dollar. That goes to purchasing the insurance, and we feel that it's really an advantage because it gives the vendors some skin in the game. So they know they're participating, they know they're responsible for their good product, and we feel that it's really helped with the goals of our organization and the people being happy about being there and feeling like they're really participating. Are there any questions from any of you?
Has anyone complained about y'all being in the parking lot?
Not at all. Not at all. In fact, some of the vendors, I have from Cowboy Cafe, one of their menus, we passed this out, and we've had several of the building owners, LeAnn Smith, for one, has purchased a building that she's going to be having a general story. They have said that you think you have more visitation. I know we pass these out and send people for salads and food, so we hope we're helping you, and you help us, too. So we've had lunch with you, and we appreciate that. We're only taking up about four parking places right now because we have our own tents, so the city or the county does not have to supply them. So we have our own tents and our own tables. So we would like to ask if we could be allowed to continue to use that parking lot until the end of this season. We know you have events, and if you have events scheduled, we would be happy to go back to the old spot. But we're very much appreciative of your efforts in helping us to set up there, and we hope that we can continue to do that and be of benefit to your revitalization program.
Thank you.
Is there any comments from my other compatriots or anyone else that would like to say anything?
I think what really, we knew this, but it was just reinforced. We thought, but it was just reinforced while we were there. The amount of people that came up, probably 90% of the people that bought strawberries from me, or bought jam, or stoked some ocean, said, "It's so nice we finally have a farmer's market." I said, "No, we've had a farmer's market."
They like it where we've had it.
Yeah, and we do, there are some people that would like to continue to set up at the conservation area, and we have discussed that with the conservation, and they're fine with that. And it's just, when people ask, we say, "Well, if there was somebody that you continually bought from, they're probably still up there, you should drive by and check." It's not a thing, it's not a division of people. I don't want anybody to think that, because this Saturday, Petria and I and Carl, we're up across from Walmart with Peggy and Margie. Next weekend, because the event for downtown got postponed, we again will be up there. It's just the downtown location, number one, it gets people that are driving through that intersection that don't ever look around other than to see if somebody's going to hit them. They stop, they get out, and they're like, "Oh, is somebody new going in the corner building right there?" So it benefits us, it benefits people that are actually getting food that was either cooked or baked that day, or picked from our greenhouses or from out of our gardens that day. It's an easier purking, it is much more handicap accessible than the gravel. And I think it helps us signal to downtown businesses, and it's helping the people of Jamestown. And I think if you would give us your blessing to continue to use that space, that we will get more of the local farmers that would be interested in setting up there. And, oh, and we didn't say cleanup. We didn't mention cleanup. Yes, we clean up. We clean up every Saturday before we leave. There won't be a toothpick on the ground that wasn't there when we got there.
Anybody else?
I know that for us, like with the coffee shop down the way, one of the things that we look forward to is people feeling more and more comfortable walking around downtown. I think it's since, like, previously been a kind of scary thing to get out of the car and walk across those intersections. And so it's encouraging, I know, to us to see people out and about enjoying the downtown area. So definitely add it to that.
So they get healthy food and get healthy rest.
All right.
We appreciate your time. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion for let's farmer's market continue setting up at the Walker parking lot?
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion by Ms. Ledbetter. Seconded by Mr. Cooper. Roll call vote, please.
Charles Cooper.
Four.
Becky Duncan.
Four.
Ginny Ledbetter.
Four.
Vanessa Matthews.
Four.
Elizabeth Pendergrass.
That's if we don't have any events, right?
Right, yeah.
I'm for it.
All four, none against.
All right. Anybody else from the public? All right. All right, we go to the mayor report for me. Just while we go, I was on the phone with Representative John Rose in Washington. We have got approved for our airport grant is $6.7 million. We should hear, he told me that we should hear something by the end of the week, or Monday at the latest, from the FAA and Department of Transportation. We've been really working hard on this, everybody has. People in Nashville, Ken Yeager, Kelly Kingsley, John Mark Wendell, John Rose, tomorrow, Alexander, they have all worked real hard on this and spent a lot of time on the phone and shaking hands and talking and trying to get this done, and we got it. So we'll be looking, probably sometime, I'm looking, probably around August, July, or late July, 1st of August, we should start bidding out for the project. And so we're working on a grant with DOT and the upper company of human resource for the sidewalk grants, rehabilitating the sidewalks we already have downtown. DOT wants to replace and work on the sidewalks so far on 52 on the intersections. They've goiled so far on Main Street, but we're trying to get this grant to them to rehabilitate the sidewalks all the way from Pine Haven School to York Elementary, make them handicap accessible as much as we can. We're working with them, they're supposed to get back with me sometime here pretty soon. Mr. Lee and Cook will give me the exact numbers on it, then we'll go from there. We've also put up a gate at the park behind the community center. We had the guys at the city here, they built this gate because originally the gate, we got the quote was $2,800. My guys and the city here built it for $300. So we saved some money by building this gate ourselves. But we're moving forward on a lot of grants and stuff and trying to get some other things done. So now we go to the city engineer report. Mr. Bennett.
Well, just one thing to update tonight. If you all remember, some months ago, we talked about the 127 project that TDOT is doing from the county line, their Phase 1 then ends around Little Road, and so that project's been going on in the, I guess you could say in the background for a while. As it relates to Jamestown, you have natural gas facilities within that project. So, gosh, I think it's probably been a year since we've talked about it, but at that time, what we had discussed was that the city, we had made a request to TDOT to increase the size of that pipeline from a four inch to an eight inch, and so that's called betterment. And that request has been made, it hasn't been released from headquarters yet, but what you should be expecting in the coming, say, months, we hope, would be a contract for those improvements. So that's just kind of a FYI, that's going to be coming as you move through any budgeting process. Those funds would probably not be due this coming fiscal year, but it depends on their schedule. You would have to put any funds for betterment into the state before the project goes out for bid, and right now, it's scheduled to go to bid. Last I heard, it was sometime in the spring of next year or so. Inevitably, that ends up moving out just a bit as time progresses. But just kind of a reminder, that project's still in the works, and we've made a request to TDOT for the betterment to increase the pipeline from four inch to an eight inch high-pressure gas main, and we're waiting to hear back their response to that. So again, just as you're planning, we need to probably provide some input to some budgetary numbers for that. That's it.
Any questions for Mr. Bennett? All right, city building inspector, Mr. South.
Well, last month, we had two building permits that were issued. We've had two this month so far, so we're already moving along quite a bit. I think the building is starting to pick up quite a bit. As many of you may have known, I've asked to be too colorful out, and the reason for that is I've tried to find out how many of our contractors around here are doing about a book, and how many we've got that are running around illegally. I can assure you that the legal contractors will go do a much better job, okay? That's been my experience over the years. Now, in the meantime, we're progressing quite well on identifying all of the buildings that need repairs. Some of them need to be demolished, and some of them just need cleaning up. These are being identified. Some letters have already gone out, others are forthcoming. There's a process that's being followed, as I mentioned earlier, with the state of any demolition projects and the asbestos issue that's a lot there. Other than that, you may have noticed there's probably about 50 less signs, illegal signs in Jamestown right now. And if you see them, when out in the community, and they start complaining, "Hey, someone stole my sign." No, I got them upstairs up here. So we're trying to clean all of these up. I even spoke to the manager of Walmart, and he says, you know, he says, "I don't mind not putting the signs out, the illegal signs out." He says, "I would appreciate it because people just automatically go out there and they stick them up, put them on light poles, they stick them up here, they stick them in someone's yard," and most of them are legal. So I have quite a collection at this point. And other than that, you know, inspection is going along as well, and the process of getting certified as the asbestos inspector. And I want to bring something on the mayor on this, too. The mayor could just have easily have said, "I'll let the citizens go out and, you know, worry about paying to get these things inspected." But he felt like, you know, it would be better for us to do it, and it be a service that, you know, we could provide for them and help them. We're not out here to bust anybody's chops. We're here to make the town better and safer. That's pretty much it.
All right.
Any questions?
All right, thank you, Mr. South. Mr. Al Reed, city attorney report.
So this month for me, I have provided you guys with a contract for Air New York City Inspector, sort of to make that finalize that officiality. You guys have already agreed on the terms with basically providing me. So I completed that contract, I have that in your files there. And then also, I've been working on some collection issues for some utilities that are owned, so working on that, frequency resolve, and helping to help us out, the city out on that. So that's all for me this month.
All right. All right, we have no old business, we go to new business. Discussion and approval for Tennessee American Water evaluate and financial rate of water and sewer. And Mr. Al Reed, I would like you to address what we're doing right now.
Okay, so this is a confidentiality agreement that the city has been provided, the council's been provided, basically just for clarity. I feel like I should turn around, I don't know, because there's like a lady who's in here. So for clarity, this is all about a transfer of information. This in no way reflects any negotiations, any deliberation. So what they're going to be getting is basically, it's an exchange of information, and that is all. So this just allows an exchange of information, and then before anything, we talked about, consider, no proposals, no deliberation whatsoever unless it happens in the public in front of everybody. So just for clarity, this only allows for an exchange of information, nothing more. So I know there's a lot of public interest and public concern with this matter, so just know that anything that happens will be talked about in this room, in front of everybody here, in front of the news stations or whatever. So this is simply just an exchange of information, and it allows to get the ball rolling, just to say, "What are the proposals? What are the numbers? We don't know." So it is not remotely a pro or against attitude, I don't think, on behalf of the city or the citizens, and so this is just simply an exchange of information to get to that next step. And again, everybody will have an opportunity to be super involved in that. There would be, before anything would ever be done, there would be numerous, or there would be a few public hearings, and it would be incredibly complex, and there will be other attorneys other than myself involved, because I will not be alone. So just kind of give you guys a general feel of that.
Any more discussion?
A question, what exchange of information between with who?
From, it's American Water.
American Tennessee Water.
And so it's just to provide some of their numbers, exchange of just some financial information, just across.
Any more discussion? Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Motion made by Ms. Pendergrass. Any more discussion? If not, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Duncan. Roll call vote, please.
Charles Cooper.
Four.
Becky Duncan.
Four.
Ginny Ledbetter.
Four.
Vanessa Matthews.
Four.
Elizabeth Pendergrass.
Four.
All four, none against.
All right, next to you, we have approval of Resolution 930, Raising Application for the Tourism Enhancement Grant. This grant is for making an amphitheater and providing a sound system for the park next to York Institute. That way, we'll have better places to have events, we won't have to block the streets, we won't have to pay a safety fee, we'll have bathrooms, and if the little ones don't like what's going on, they can go swing, they can do whatever they want. And also better parking. So we're looking at this grant, it's a $75,000 grant that we would have to match only $3,000. And I've been working with Amanda Maynard on this grant, and we should have it in by Wednesday or Thursday, yes. And we need a recommendation from the board to approve this resolution to get this grant.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion made by Ms. Matthews. I have a second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Cooper. Roll call vote, please.
Charles Cooper.
Four.
Becky Duncan.
Four.
Ginny Ledbetter.
Four.
Vanessa Matthews.
Four.
Elizabeth Pendergrass.
Four.
All four, none against.
All right, next on the agenda is approval of the financial statements for April.
General Fund is $232,494.8. Water and Sewer Fund, $1,099,985.36. Natural Gas, $1,707,178.29, with a grand total of $3,039,657.73.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the financial statement for April?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion made by Ms. Matthews. Any discussion? Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Ledbetter. Seconded by Ms. Ledbetter. Roll call vote, please.
Charles Cooper.
Four.
Becky Duncan.
Four.
Jenny Ledbetter.
Four.
Vanessa Matthews.
Four.
Elizabeth Pendergrass.
Four.
All four, none against.
Next on the agenda is approval for the monthly bills for April.
Total of four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, twenty-one dollars and ninety-six cents. That includes the natural gas bill.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the monthly bills?
I make the motion.
Motion made by Ms. Pendergrass, any discussion? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Ms. Matthews, sorry. Roll call vote, please.
Charles Cooper.
Four.
Becky Duncan.
Four.
Jenny Ledbetter.
Four.
Vanessa Matthews.
Four.
Elizabeth Pendergrass.
Four.
All four, none against.
All right. Uh, that's all we got on the agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make the motion.
Have a motion made by everybody? Seconded by, it's a little safe, uh, Ms. Pendergrass made the motion, seconded by, uh, Ms. Duncan, and Charles, and Jenny, and Vanessa, there we go. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you all.